Lisa, could you please lead us in the public?
Thank you very much, everybody. Please silence your electronic devices as needed. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Mr. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
Yes, in fact, there is tonight, Mr. President. I recommend that we remove item I thirteen from the agenda.
Do I have a motion to remove I thirteen from tonight's agenda made by Mrs.
Don't matter.
Galvin Weir, seconded by Mrs. Mason Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. A motion to adopt the agenda as is. Made by Ms. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Mason Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. A motion to approve the draft minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Grodin. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. We need to recess for a code of conduct public hearing. So do I have a motion to recess for our code of conduct public hearing made by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Order. Do I need to say anything?
Sure, go ahead. So every year, Board of Education is required to annually review the Code of Conduct. And also required to hold a public hearing. If there is to be any changes to the Code of Conduct, there are no changes to the Code of Conduct since the board last acted to change it back in the winter with the hat, the provision about wearing hats in elementary schools. So since that time, the Code of Conduct Committee has met. And there are no changes to the Code of Conduct, correct?
Correct. The only thing is personnel changes.
Yeah, names. So by doing so tonight, it kind of renews us for the year, which means a year from now, if not sooner, we'll revisit the Code of Conduct and the Code of Conduct Committee does meet regularly.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Very well, um. Motion to return back to public session.
I have a question.
Do that before after we come back. I believe we do that after we come back.
She asked about the Code of Conduct.
About the Code of Conduct?
She could ask that now.
Sure.
And ask that.
Um, I guess I think we're gonna, hi, question on page seventeen, number thirteen. Where said the SRO will not be involved in enforcement of disciplinary infractions?
Yes.
So that mean that the SROs are not involved?
That means they're not involved in the enforcement of disciplinary actions.
But they're involved in investigation of peace.
If there is a potential crime that might have been committed, they can be in the room while an administrator talks to a student. They cannot question the student. But administrator could ask questions of the student about an incident and the SRO can be present to witness that.
Would it be a crime? It would be a violation?
If a crime were suspected, not, you know, why are you tardy from, you know? Why are you late to social studies class five times in the last two weeks? They wouldn't be involved in discussions like that. But if there were things like theft or weapons or assault, they would be.
Okay, that brings me to the other page too without the police being involved with. There's another section in there where it said that, um. Before police officials are permitted, question at page fifty. It said the opportunity to be present, try to notify parents. If not, will to try.
So the onus, this we don't we don't supervise or control the school resource office. So they operate under their rules too. So what the Code of Conduct is saying is that school staff will be expected to try. But even if we try and the parent doesn't pick up, that still does not give law enforcement the right to question a minor without the parent's consent. So all this is saying is that if we're in a room and we know that police are going to question the child, we will make the effort to contact the parent. But the police still have to operate under their laws and regulations about when they can question a minor. Okay? So it doesn't change that. We can't affect that.
Page forty-one. I am a little confused on why it says in writing, it's been written for hours, but it says nothing, it said we do best to contact parents or
What paragraph?
At the bottom of page forty-one, top of page forty-two. It says where possible, notice also be provided by telephone. If school has been provided with a telephone number, so would a child violate the Code of Conduct or suspension or removal? So you don't contact the parents first, the letter sent within twenty-four hours?
So this is a particular clause related to the same legislation that gives teachers the right to almost kind of invoke their own classroom suspension on a student. So this is that particular mechanism. So if that were to happen within twenty-four hours, the principal or another administrator must notify the student's caregivers. And then it goes on through that. So this is not a out-of-school suspension. This is something that came about with the same legislation that said teachers have this authority to do it. So this is just a mere reflection.
Wait, you'll try to contact the parents again where, I mean, I just I'm trying to understand this.
Must notify the student's caregiver. So think of it like a suspension notice. That's, that's the essence of what it is.
But they don't help them call. Should also be provided by telephone. So the child's in trouble, a phone call is not given at first and then the writing that then they're written notice?
Where possible, notice should also be provided by telephone if the school has been provided with a telephone number for the purpose of contacting caregivers. Yeah, so a phone call is made if possible. Meaning that there's a phone number on record. So if we don't have a parent's phone number on record, we're not required to try to go find that.
Or or a work phone number.
Or a work, yeah, a work. So you still have to give the written notice. But if you have a phone number that's operating, the administrator has to call it. To.
Then with the strip search, strip searches, again, it says we'll attempt to notify students caregiver by telephone before conducting a strip search. I mean, you don't like, I mean, we'll do, it's like, we'll attend.
These are consistent with state, I'm sorry, what page are you on?
That is page forty-nine.
So these are consistent with the Commission's regulations on searches and such. So the strip search is incredibly invasive. It's an extreme search. It really has to meet a high threshold of danger.
Absolutely. I'm just curious, is this will attempt to notify parents that will be here on the back page fifty again, try notifying parent, try, 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 but it's not like, I don't know.
Say, if you say will, there could be a danger of the student hiding some type of weapon or other contraband that the administrator is not able to locate and seize because we're waiting for a parent to call us back. That's what will would entail. So
The child is I'm just trying to understand this. If a child suspended or I don't know, has detention, did not telephone call home, a letter is just sent home and maybe the parent will get the letter? I mean, parents aren't notified when this occurs? By phone?
Detention?
Or anything, wherever.
Well, there's different levels. You're talking about detention or in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension.
Out-of-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, child suspended.
Yes.
Or I don't know, also having a weapon. Will try to contact the parent?
Yes.
And if the parent is not notified, you just send the child out of the school and how did this, I'm trying to understand.
Depends on the situation. They certainly get written notice, but every effort is made to but make a big phone contact with the student. Or with a parent.
And I think also to interject, we have attendance officers that go to children's homes within a certain period of time of the suspension and they've been instrumental, at least with me as a hearing officer, trying to contact that parent because nine, tens out of ten, the phone numbers that we have in school tool are not working anymore or are, no one's picking up. Sometimes they see Monticello School and they intentionally do not pick up their phone. So if we try and try and try to call and if we can't get through then that attendance officer will go directly to the house to deliver the notice and then come back and report to us. Sometimes they've talked to the parent or they've seen the parent so that we know the parent has gotten that notice.
Right. I just found that just a little, I don't know.
Well, the way it is read and interpreted is that the administrator makes reasonable efforts to contact the parent in these situations. However, just because they're not able to get a hold of the parent by phone doesn't mean that can't suspend the student.
I understand. It just seems like, you know, way, the way I took that as like, wow, so they don't have to call the parent, they can just send a letter home in the mail and you're really going to be in the blue until you get that notice.
Sure, but there, there's rights and privileges that are in that notice as well for the, for the parent if those students get suspended.
On page forty-eight, at the last paragraph, it says, before searching a student, students belonging to authorized school official will attempt to get the student to admit that he or she possesses physical evidence that they violated the law or district code or get the student to voluntary consent to the search. So before parents even contact, we're trying to get them to admit involuntary, to a voluntary search?
Admit that they violated the Code of Conduct. So the intent here is that you know, you have something in your bag that you shouldn't have in school. And you're giving them that opportunity to own it, to confess if they have it before conducting the search. So what this does is a stopgap. So a school official just doesn't go straight to the bag and open it up and start searching. But rather, you know, did you bring something to school today that you shouldn't that's in your backpack? Because I've, I've heard stories, I've heard reports from a friend that you did that. Well, that's what this this is, uh.
But before they're voluntarily, voluntarily searched, parents not
No.
contact.
No.
So if a student says, no, I'm not volunteering to this search, then what?
If the administrator has reasonable suspicion that there's something in that backpack that is illegal or violates the Code of Conduct, they can search that backpack. They do it with other staff present. And it's consistent with state ed regulations and state laws. Basically, you have to, the more invasive the search, the more suspicion, reasonable suspicion you have to have. Just can't do a a blanket search of everything that the student has. You have to have reasonable suspicion that it's in this backpack and these are the people who told me they saw it in the backpack.
And that's all documented. So when a parent comes in, they can provide that documentation.
Yeah. They don't provide that. They have to be able to attest to, you know, this is what, this was the reasonable suspicion I went on and I didn't search.
That's usually added to a referral or suspension letter. Those details are put in there and some capacity how we led to, what led up to reasonable suspicion.
Maybe less for school officials, it's still law enforcement.
Right. I'm just thinking about students' rights.
Any other questions regarding the Code of Conduct?
I didn't hear about the resource officer.
Going to the hall?
For the teacher. If that's what's happening, if we have, I'm sorry, having source officer, if I may, office, yeah, how can I clarify? As part of
So because you could, we can serve parents through any number of staff members. If you're right, the attendance officer will, then it has to be the attendance officer. Right. So it could be, could be the SRO, could be a security aide, could be a guidance counselor or a social worker or an administrator. Okay, you don't want to
No, I guess, I don't remember seeing that. Stop, remember, spring, no.
Motion to adjourn Code of Conduct Public Hearing made by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? So reconvene the meeting. I don't actually have that motion. Yeah, okay, motion to reconvene meeting?
Did you vote on accepting the Code of Conduct?
That's later.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's in the action notes.
Okay.
Motion to reconvene meeting made by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Galigan. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. Adriana?
I like the motion that we accepted consent agenda items F-one to I twelve and I fourteen to down one.
Do I have a second on that made by Mrs. Rivera? Any discussion? All in favor? So order. Thank you very much. Adriana? Um. Congratulations to the people we just affected. Um, but moving on to information reports and discussion, board roundtable. Adriana?
No report.
Wendy?
Todd? Went to this amazing graduation and I'd like to say congratulations to everybody who walked across the stage and, and I couldn't have done it without everybody who pitched in and did the committee and graduation and I liked the efficacy and oh my goodness, an hour and a half. And you people know who you are. So that was just amazing. That's what I have to report, I love being part of.
With the graduation as well. It was beautiful.
Thank you. Uh, like a
Here the same sentiment as my fellow trustees of graduation.
Jim?
Ditto.
Ditto. Um, I also attended graduation. It was very nice. Thank you to everyone who put it together. Um. We did receive some correspondence regarding graduation. Um. And seeing as how we did have reord tonight and we assigned people to the graduation committee. Uh, next year, we might want to look a little bit at, um, how we can maybe make the salutatorian and the valedictorian stand out a little bit. Um, and recognize those accomplishments that, that those students made to graduate high school with that honor because obviously it is a milestone and something those kids probably worked very hard at. I mean, I hope they did. Obviously, there's people out there who don't have to work at it, grown and stuff, but, um. Going, you know, it is nice to give those kids a little bit of a shout out and recognize the accomplishments that they made. Um. Graduating high school at the top of their class. Um, we did receive some correspondence that some people wish to see a little bit of that. Um. That being said, moving on to our director, no, I'm sorry, principal reports. Um, any questions, comments, concerns regarding those guys? Very well, moving on, correspondence outcomes. Um. None listed at this time. Dr. Evans, capital project update?
Certainly, Mr. Crumley. Good evening, everyone. So a few different things. The we were to have an owners meeting yesterday, but many of the primary players are on vacation or on leave, so we're expecting another one next Wednesday or the week thereafter. Next Wednesday, so we'll have a more detailed capital project update, update for you. Um, we are running into an issue at Chase Elementary School with the solar panels. And I think I shared this with you a few months ago. Um. There's still, uh, concern from Orange and Rockland's part about hooking up our solar panels to their system. The primary reason for that is because they believe that in order for us to do a hookup now would require us to buy some inverter or some other device that would become obsolete once they complete the construction of their new Wartsboro substation, which is now anticipated for completion in two thousand and twenty-eight. So we've had a number of meetings with multiple players, O and R, Train and Energia. This all comes out of our energy performance contract. So there's kind of these different variables at play. But right now, what we're trying to pursue with Orange and Rockland and they're considering what's known as a non-export uh transmission, I guess, what's not a transmission? So in other words, that we could somehow harness the energy that's collected from the solar panels on the roof of Chase without it going back into the grid. Otherwise, we have to wait till two thousand and twenty-eight or buy, I think it was like a two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that will be obsolete in eight years. At the same time, we have to kind of balance this against that eighteen-year payback of the energy performance contract. So there's these different things at play. We're meeting once a week. Did you have a meeting today? Anything different, new? So that's why those, they're installed on the roof, they're ready to go. It's just not hooked up to the grid. Mr. Crowe?
Is there any discussion about banks of batteries to store this?
There were discussions about batteries, but that, I think Energia had issues with that and didn't know of it being done at that scale. One thing to have, you know, you're a little
At that point, you're actually probably using capacity. Like all the big solar farms you actually see out there, they've, they've installed the substations next to them, a capacitor essentially that stores that power.
I'm looking at that like it not necessarily to be Tesla. The Tesla has that where it's going to power an entire house with twenty thousand watts you get it. So you had, if you had four of those, that would equal a house, but it covered the whole campus.
Energia, they entertained that idea, but they did not, um, think it prudent. Okay, that was the last, you know, some type of battery or something where this would be stored on site, but they did not have paid.
At least, if anything, I would say it seems like that might be either grant monies that maybe are local representatives to state government. Has that been pushed yet?
Not yet, because I think most of the players don't believe it to be a wise use of, you know, by this inverter right now that in five years is going to be threatening.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't know yet. I mean, I suppose if they come back and say you can't do a non-export, then we'll probably be going back to that idea. And the last thing I have is tonight, board will be acting, or less I have for the capital project update tonight, you're acting on the contract with the new district architect. That's BBS. If approved, we'll begin the transition process with them and our current architect tomorrow. Um, we recall that we went through a request for proposal. The district issued back in the winter, the board's capital project oversight committee met along with district administration, reviewed RFP submissions, heard presentations from two finalists in particular. That's how we got to this recommendation tonight.
When do you foresee us meeting again in order to start the next capital project?
Probably the fall.
Great.
Um, the entrance into the lower parking lot on the Bridge Avenue, they put the kind of walkway in there, which comes back to the roadway. It's kind of substantial. I would recommend that we put some sort of strapping on that because I see the first day of school, Mr. Johnson driving down it. Okay, I don't know who Mr. Johnson is yet.
Oh.
Somebody's going to do it. It's just wide enough to think that that's for your car. Um, and which way? Any other questions regarding capital project? Fantastic. Moving on to upcoming events. Um, bum, bum, bum. Obviously RSA is coming up Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Um, other items are listed on your agenda. Um, the board retreat, I got some, I'm going to go over it with a little bit with Dr. Evans after the meeting, so you know. Okay, um. They have some question, uh, NISBA had some questionnaire, some questions put together that we can create a questionnaire to get out to people. So we have a little bit of input. So we're not starting at zero at the board retreat, working on the district vision goals. And that we can maybe start at three or four and have a productive day.
So it's going to, you know, by the time yet?
Nine to three.
And that's going to be all NISBA on the goal setting? Are we having different? Like, is there an agenda yet together?
Uh, negative. It's primarily going to be working on district vision and district goals. The information they gave me at that point, once those are kind of set, then we could actually work on board vision and work goals that would then be in lockstep with the, with the district vision. Community events. Listed out, um, actually no. There's none listed at the present moment in time. Oh, there's a few start races, a couple, uh, articles there for your enjoyment. Janet, is there any questions and comments from the public?
Yeah, this time.
Thank you, public. Um, moving on to superintendent update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. I just want to reiterate Mr. Crumley's acknowledgement earlier, Allison Villius, Ryan Jasper. Congratulations to being named full-time Director of Health, Physical Education, Athletics and Assistant Director of People Personnel Services. Not only did they uh, you know, agree to kind of take a trial this last fall or winter, but they've been attending and completing their administrative courses and now have their administrative certifications. So congratulations. We're happy for you and welcome to board. Speaking of personnel, Ms. Carlin and I are in the process of screening interviews of our current administrative vacancies. Those are the assistant principalships at Rutherford and Kaiser, as well as the high school principalship. We'll be moving into committee interviews later this month. Our administrators, you know, throughout the system are interviewing staff members for the upcoming year. So it's a, it's a busy time of year for that. Uh, at the last meeting, the board had requested that legal counsel hopefully be able to answer some of their questions regarding the state ed, state ed's update on transgender and gender expansive students. Anthony Fasana will be here at the July twentieth meeting to discuss that document and answer any questions the Board of Education might have. And similar to the Board of Education retreat on July twenty-second, uh, we're having our administrative retreat earlier that week as well, on July twentieth and the twenty-first, and I've given you some details on the presenters. Nicole Alioto from Alabrevay will be at the board meeting also on July twentieth, and she will give a presentation on the school culture and climate surveys that were administered last winter. She'll also be with our administrative team on Friday, July twenty-first, and we'll be working on our goals in response to that, for those findings and how to make improvements there. And, uh, oh, one last and very important thing. Uh, after some back and forth with our Director of ELA Social Studies in the Arts, Mr. Keith Petsinger and the National Association of, uh, Music, if I put this wrong. Now, the group that historically recognizes districts for best communities of music education. They acknowledge that our district should have been awarded this recognition. So I see the email strand in there. When Ms. Bonfante returns to vacation, she and Mr. Petsinger will get something out on our website and social media platforms to that effect. So I want to thank our music teachers for everything they do and our administrators for promoting music education in our schools.
That's all I have. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Any questions for Dr. Evans regarding his update? Very well, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Lisa.
Thank you. This evening, I'm asking the board to approve the internal audit reports for the periods October through December of twenty-two and January through March twenty-three and the corresponding corrective action plans for those reports. So you know, there's no action to be taken. Corrective action. Um, I'm asking the board to award the DCMO ice cream bid for the twenty-three, twenty-fourth year. We had two bidders this year. Um, and I think it's Gillette that we're as, to award to. And finally, I'm asking the board to create the TRS, which is the Teachers Retirement System Subfund Reserve, our external auditor, his entrance conference presentation. That's a reserve that we should have, um, and I'm asking
That that's a reserve that we should have, um, and I'm asking the board to fund that. On. Up to six hundred nineteen thousand dollars. There's limits on what you can. Reserve each year for that. Some fun, and. I'm asking the board to appropriate some money to the workers' compensation reserve. We had a. Review and um, every year we did our. Excess coverage and to get the premium down, our out-of-pocket went up. And so catastrophic loss, we would have to out-of-pocket. About seven hundred fifty thousand dollars if we did that ever happen. We did have serious injury. Um. So potential there. So and I'm asking the board to fund the workers' comp reserve up to the max that you approved in the reserve plan last year. Nothing.
Questions for Lisa? Thank you very much. Um, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Teresa.
Good evening. Um, I just have a couple of things to run by you. Uh, as you know, our Cook School um, was identified as a school in need of. Um, we're not using the word improvement, but a school in need of some goal setting. Um, and Rutherford as well. Both of those buildings have been working very hard on their plans. Um, Cook as a C S I school, we have a state representative that works with us, and every step of the way kind of checks our plan to make sure that it's what the state is looking for. That plan is just about done, um, and it needs to be submitted to the state in uh, mid-July. Uh, another part of the requirement is a presentation to the board, which will happen at the July twentieth board meeting. Um, so that you're aware of what the plan entails. Um, that presentation will be made by um, our principal of of the uh, Cook School. Um, and the T S I Rutherford plan is a little less. Um. I don't know how to say this, but the state is not as involved because it's not to the level. Um, where they feel they need to be involved, but we still need to have a plan of improvement. That plan will be presented to you probably at the second board meeting in August. It does not have to be submitted to the state. Um, there is not a state liaison that uh, checks our plan. They kind of let the district uh. Make sure my role is to make sure that plan is being done appropriately. Your role as a board. Hearing um, the plan. And asking questions, and then the both of those plans have to be on our website before the start. Of the new school year in September. Um. Along those lines, there's a large sum of money that comes with. Those plans to help us carry out those plans, so. I will be writing those grants. Um, they're both due August thirty first, uh, at the same time as our title grant. You will notice some contracts coming on uh, to tonight from McGraw Hill. And Send Gage Learning, both of those. Um, are for professional development opportunities and uh, coaching opportunities for our staff over the summer primarily, and also into the school year. Um, and they go in line with some of the um, improvements that are listed in both of those plans. So every time we have something on the agenda that has to do with the. Plan or that grant, I will make make you aware of that. Um. But as I said, you will see in the next couple of months, we'll have those contracts coming through to carry out the that, the both of those plans. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, so for your section in Q, I have nothing underneath there. Is everybody else the same with nothing underneath there?
Yeah, I did not have anything specific.
So I have a question. When you have things that we're going to approve, is there any way that you can put them underneath your section so that? For me, I find it easier to know that it belongs to you, like what Lisa does, like, no. I just think it'll be easier for me to know.
Yeah, I, that would be up to Janet, anytime I have a contract, you can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Teresa? Thank you very much, Mrs. Bro. Uh, moving on to Adriana.
Um, I motion that we consider action items T one through T eighteen.
I'm section on that, made by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? Adriana?
I motion that we approve action items T one for T eighteen.
I'm second on that, made by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Uh, moves us to opposing a meeting, correspondence. Um, you can uh, see those in your executive content, um, a little bit of what I moved to for. Uh, questions and comments from the public. Uh, Janet? Oh. Uh, moves us to adjournment. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn, made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, any discussion? All in favor? So. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations, Mr. Jasper and Miss Bill. Thank you for coming out, guys.